Regular meeting, call to order, road call.
Dave?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Brady? Go ahead, Harold, I'm just my...
The other kids were busy. Two one, discussion with possible actions concerning the parking situation problem on Main Street and Oklahoma Avenue. Bert Grups.
Okay, I'm gonna borrow their drawing. Because I think there's been a little bit of misconception when I brought this up. Because I've had calls, am I talking about the west by the Mercantile? No, am I talking over here? No. The only thing, and another misconception, I think the public has thought that I am asking for a change. This is not a change. From this alley, which is this alley right out here behind us, to Cherokee Street has always been parallel parking. There is a sign right there. There used to be a sign along here. I think when they replaced sidewalk at one time, it came out. So, the problem is, people are not, are not parallel parking here where they're supposed to. They're angle parking, which creates two problems. You come north down this alley, in either direction you go, if there's angle parking here, you have to pull out around them into this westbound lane. The bigger problem is coming north on Cherokee and not being able to see to get out of that. And I know Alyssa has done some work here on angle parking, and I think that's wonderful. I would just like to see us keep this parallel like it's been for 30 or 40 years. The problem is, the lines are worn off. People don't know where to park, so they've just started in angle parking.
Ah.
Monday, there was a pickup truck sitting right here. If he wasn't blocking the handicap ramp, he was close to the intersection, he was within a foot or two, I would say. And I know it was there at nine in the morning, and I know it was still there at 12:30 in the afternoon. So, it makes it tough for people to be able to see. So, I think when we, when we do these repainting, and Harold and I, we're just talking, we need handicap parking, definitely by the post office up here in the main intersection, really all of our intersections, because we've got the ramps. We need to mark handicap spots, but I think back, one space at least from every intersection needs to be a no parking, so that people can see around. Not only that, we have fire hydrants here, and we need no parking around it. We've got a fire hydrant at First Street and at Second Street. And I know, I know people in Hennessy do not want to see parking changes because we have limited parking now, and I get that. I wish, I wish at some point the town could purchase a closed property or something and make a parking lot. Because downtown's busy anymore, and we just, we just need places for people to park. But I think for a safety thing, we've talked about making this alley one way going south. I don't really have an issue with that, except it's not gonna help us over here on Cherokee. It would help some here. That, and I think it's gonna be confusing to people. I don't know how many people pull in from there, going to the church and this and that. Anyway, anybody got any questions about what I'm, what I'm thinking, or?
My, my deal is, that's one thing I was gonna add. This is already parallel parking right here, right there.
Great.
All right? This right here is no parking. There's a sign right there on that corner that says no parking.
On what?
Right next to the Mises Building.
Says no parking?
Yeah, anytime, no parking, anytime, red arrow, all the way down that deal. You know, so...
Hmm, I've never seen that.
Down over here on that, by that pole right there has got parallel parking. You know, right across the street in between the Hyde and that one building is where the old, uh, uh, parallel parking sign was at. In '83 or '85, somewhere in that, Sheepshears was the deal. There was three wrecks right there on Oklahoma and Cherokee. The town board changed that rule to parallel parking to do that. Like I said, I just drove by there because the parallel, or the, the handicap parking right there, somebody always tries to get in between it and the walk coming up there. So, do we need to paint the curves red?
We will, we, we will be painting, like if they're handicapped, it'll all be blue. If there's parking, it'll be parking. And then other than that, well, we'll probably make it like, we talked about making a square and putting those white lines through it.
There is a sign, there is a sign right there on that deal, no parking at any time.
Well, that's funny, because I parked right there and never seen it.
So, yeah. So, do we have to, is there, since that, doesn't that way, do we have to change something?
Um, I don't think it was, it was never put in the code book or anything, so that's, it's not, I mean, I don't know how it got changed back. I'm gonna guess that lines were never, um...
If that, if no parking, they probably never lined striped there.
But there was line striped here.
There?
Yes.
There's a sign on pole up there that says no parking at any time.
Looks like we just need to clean up everything, get the signs that don't pertain down, and get proper signage up for handicap and...
Explain what we come up with?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's start right here by the Mercantile and Mises Building. So, this, we pulled up Google Earth, and there was actually people parked all along here, so we thought, oh, well, we can use that to kind of show. Their parking, pretty much what we just say about the 60-degree angle. We would like to go with a 45. It would kind of give us a little bit more, it was like an extra four foot in the street?
Yeah.
I think it was. Because then from the curb out to the end is only 10 feet, whereas the other is 14. So, that would give us an extra, by the time, eight foot by the time you do both sides.
And we tried that, right down here. We parked some of the city trucks at that angle. We had somebody come around, go through the alley, and, you know, see how good the visibility was. And it helped a lot. We didn't do it on the west side, we just did it right here. Yeah.
Not only that, so that's what we, we propose on these. Coming down and making this first one a handicap, a bigger handicap. And not, therefore you're, you know, you're taking, you're going probably close to 20 foot, 30 foot back behind the building lines before you actually get an actual parking spot.
Can I ask you a question, not to interrupt you, but are you talking about on both sides of the street?
Yes.
Handicap? Okay.
Yes.
Because I agree, I think there needs to be four handicap spots in every intersection.
Yes.
And wide enough that if people are in a van, and I'm sorry, an unloaded wheelchair, that...
So, there's that. When you come over here, same thing. But as you can tell on this one, because people come in through the alley, we're gonna kind of further down to give it room to be able to see around the vehicle. So, we're gonna pretty much cut out that last one, so that people coming down the alley would be able to see a little bit better. Then, when you get down here, City Hall, the side of City Hall, the same thing. First Street, the same thing, on the West First Street. And then we talked about cutting out this parking spot, and then cutting out this parking spot. We did not these up here because there's a stoplight. So, when you pull up, you don't have to worry, you can wait till it turns green.
I suggest you cut out the one in my corner now also, because it's, my corner is where...
Yes, we just haven't got down there yet.
...sticks out, you're gonna have, you're gonna be way out to see.
Yeah, we haven't got down there.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So, does that... Speaking of this, I know you're talking about parallel parking right here. I don't know that we necessarily, when we get these new angles going in there, because now people, some people are even parking probably at a 75-degree angle.
Some of them park...
Some people are parking like at a 75-degree angle.
Yeah.
In front of Honey, uh, the Hyde.
Obviously.
So, I think...
Some of them park in a nice, I mean, it's...
Yes. So, once we get those parking spots in there, and then we cut off, like right here, there's not gonna be, I mean, any different than the rest of the streets.
Tiffany, let me ask you a question. Can we, I think you were gonna go in to do some checking to see if we had a proper ramp. Now that Honey &amp; Co. is here, can we put a handicap parking in front of it, right where that car is?
Cars, right there?
Uh-huh.
Yes. The thing is, is we've got to redo this right here, this, this ramp. We've gotta redo that. We gotta re, is it this one was okay?
No.
We gotta take, we gotta take both of those out and put that rippled stuff in there and make sure the slope.
Make sure they're wide.
My question for you, Bert, is here, where your, where your drive is for your building. We really need to take that out.
Okay, well, okay. Take the drive out or just put parking there?
Take the drive out. You know how, we need to make it a smooth surface on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Because we've had numerous people tripping and falling right there.
Oh, we don't need that.
So, either that, we're gonna come straight out. You can put a little dip for you to be able to do that.
No, I, I don't drive into that, and we can take it out. I, uh, I'm going to be moving everything out of that building and hopefully selling it at some point in the not-too-distant future anyway.
Okay.
So...
Bert?
But that's, that's majority of our issues that we're having with people walking down sidewalks is happening right there.
And believe me, when you do stripe that, regardless, you can stripe right across the front of that, because at one time it was marked no parking in the garage door, but that's not necessary.
Okay. But yes, we could do handicap here. The only thing is, is the handicap ramp for that will be right here. It cannot be in front of the building. It has to be on the corner.
Yeah, no, right, yeah.
So, will all the parking stay angle parking on Oklahoma Avenue on both sides?
I mean, this right here, I think it could probably stay parallel because you only got the Life EMS building, and you, the rest of this is bank parking. So, really, you only have maybe, what, 30 feet of...
A lot of the time, the only time people park there is if the wheel place has something going. So, most of the time it's just empty.
Yeah. Because you've got, I mean, this right here is all you have, that people could possibly park. I mean, you could even take out the parking, right there. I mean, two spots versus losing numerous spots right here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's totally up to you guys.
I just wanna make sure right where your right hand is coming up Cherokee to the north, to make sure whatever we do, people can see that they're turning west.
I've looked at that too. You look at this intersection, we're narrow here, and then we widen. So, people can actually get further out here to be able to see traffic because the intersection for them to turn right or whatever is further out. I think some people get in a hurry and don't slow down and things like that. I, I mean, honestly, I think people need to be a little bit more cautious when they're driving.
Absolutely. I had an officer telling me that yesterday.
I was gonna say, good luck with that. Huh? I said, good luck with that. No, I'm just, no, I understand, they should be, but I'm just saying. You know how many times I pulled out here almost back here, and I'm like, Tiffany, you've gotta slow down. You've gotta slow down. Yeah, but it's the people that go, you know, zooming down the road. But, and then what we do here, I say that we do right here too. Or right here, and we don't have to worry about Duane's, but right here.
Where is that?
Um, right there.
Second Street.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Down by, because you got people at Gales Brill, and they've got another business going in there or something, but you've got people, parallel parking there at all times. We did find out from the state that we are responsible for marking the, the parallel parking on Main Street, and then also the crosswalks.
Did you find out a good quality paint that will hold?
Yes. Well, we got, we got what the state uses.
Oh, great, great. Because it seems like we mark them, and in six months you can't see them.
Well, that's true, because we were using regular spray paint, and they use like a beaded, reflective...
That's awesome.
High-quality type.
Yeah, because people run over those highway lines continuously in that state.
And then as far as the handicap for the post office, this right here is not our street. That is their parking.
First Street? Oh, yes.
That's their parking, so to me, they're responsible for marking their parking.
That's not street parking, I'm making sure.
Do you have any questions?
I can, I agree with what you guys are doing on this, and I can vote for this. I, I do wanna, I do wanna say, and Alyssa, I'm talking to you and Tiffany actually. In the last meeting, I mentioned that there are ADA requirements on handicap parking. And I was wondering if you guys touched base with those folks, or...
We have.
You have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I know, it's kind of hard to explain. This is a subject that's near and dear to my heart. I'm talking about handicap parking, I'm not talking about the angles and all that stuff. So, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing and don't have to redo it.
Yeah.
That's all, that's my concern. And I, I like the fact that you guys have gone, you know, beyond what we've done in the past and got with the state, and you're gonna use the state's paint. I think that's tremendous, a tremendous improvement in what's going on. And I would like to see this done in the future, town-wide, evaluating our handicap spots. There's some type of math formula that, that they use, that there's a percentage of parking spots in a parking area that has to be handicapped.
Yes.
And I don't know what that math formula is. I haven't looked it up or anything like that. I, I knew you guys were working on what we're talking about today, and I knew you guys were gonna come in here and, and tell us where you're, where you're gonna put the handicap spots. And like I said, I agree with it. I just, I just hope we don't have to go back and redo any of this. And then I'm hoping we can expand this across town as, as funding permits to get, to get us in compliance town-wide with ADA requirements.
So, any new commercial business or anything like that that goes in, there is building standards that tells you how many parking spots you have to have for the type of business and stuff like that. How many of them are handicap? That's all in the building codes.
Yeah.
So, when they put in any business, they all have to reach that. It's just like your Family Dollar and your Dollar General.
Yeah, the corporate, the corporate folks seem to be doing a real good job. Casey's, for example, I think that stuff was done strictly by the law, and I agree with you on the Dollar Stores. But we do have some stuff that's lacking here in town. And then we have, I've noticed that, I'll use the churches as an example, they are marking their own spots.
That's their property.
Yeah, exactly. So, my, my point is, is there's people in town here that are putting effort into it to get handicap spots set up, and, and hopefully they're using good paint also. Anyway, so I'm off my soapbox. I, I don't have a problem with what you guys are doing here. I would like to see it expanded in the future. Thank you.
I'd rather see us try the angle parking over making this alley one way. I just feel like...
Where, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Trying the angle parking the way they have it laid out, especially if we're gonna gain eight feet on the street, rather than it had been talked about, we had discussed, as a port, making this alley one way southbound, and that alley's one way northbound, which I don't think would particularly create a problem, but I just think it may be confusing to people.
Yes.
So...
I had, I had one more question that just popped up. And I'm not trying to tell our law enforcement officers what to do at all. This is a question, it's not a statement. Once we make these changes, would it be possible for our police officers to give some warning tickets to people before they start pulling the trigger on?
That is totally up to them, their call. You cannot tell them...
I know, that's why I led with...
What tickets to write, what warnings to write. You cannot tell them anything.
I know, that's why I led with what I said, is...
Yeah. We cannot.
I'm asking a question. The question is, you, our law enforcement officers, have the capability of writing warning tickets if they want to on this topic?
Oh, they have, they have that to write warning tickets for anything.
Can I say something as a handicap person? Just when you go up the slopes, I like the rails. And I realize they're not steep, but having a prosthetic leg, I don't always have control of that. And even though it's a little bit, we have a few rails over here, like on the four-way over by Mercantile, but I think over by Honey Hill and stuff, we, I was shopping there this past weekend. I know how to use my daughter to get up the ramp that is there now.
That's because it's not, it doesn't need to be made.
I, I know that one does not now. But still, that being said, even though a little bit of slant, a rail will go a long ways with a handicap person. I don't think it'd cost a whole lot of extra money to put a rail up, and I think it would save somebody from busting it. Me for one. That's just my opinion.
Where did you go up?
Right here in like... By the alley, and in front of her shop.
Because some people think that that drive is like a handicap thing over in front of Bert's building.
Yeah, because we went up right there.
It's steep, but...
And then we had to walk through the alley to get into where she was having herself at, right in front of her store.
My, my other deal, it's fine that I like to see, you know, visually find some parking, you know, maybe where we can find other parking besides just on, on the Main Street. So, you know, like, like right here, that bacon hot right here, would have to be visible for parking. If we purchased it for parking, you know? And I like Bert's places for sale, you know? I don't know if you checked up buildings yet.
It's, it's 30 feet wide. I mean, it would add a little parking, but not...
So, how far could you go back in that way, was it?
All the way to the alley.
Sure. Yeah. So, that, I mean, I know it's right off the subject, but it seems like that area is getting busier and busier all the time, you know, for parking.
I will keep my eyes and ears open for possible future parking.
Isn't the Clipper building for sale?
Yeah, I think it is.
Kingfisher tore down some buildings and have parking in between. Looks pretty nice there.
I think that would probably, you know, if you could, I don't even know if you could.
It's like 25 feet.
It's 25 feet, yeah.
So, you might can...
Bar, you wanna buy it?
That would be hard to, it would be a one-way through, and maybe park on one side.
Kingfisher's done that, where the old theater was. It's a one-way angled...
It's like, when it's busy and people wanna go, you know, they use all the parking all the way down here and that road right there, when they wanna go to the Mexican restaurant.
Oh, yeah.
They park all along down here.
Kingfisher should get some parking places, like plant trees and park it.
That's what I wanted, and it would quite help too, once we start getting, getting some parking done around the, uh, Harborview.
Yeah. Yeah.
I thank you ladies for taking the time and doing it right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, once we get, since we give this angle, that angle will be used, like in City Hall's parking lot. It'll be used on all of the, like, for the first block on each side.
Tiffany, let me ask you a question. They've mentioned churches. Right there along the south side of the Baptist Church, that's street parking, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, it will...
Okay. I knew you said some of it was there.
Well, but like, you take their...
That is there.
Like, that's theirs, and that's where they have their handicap.
Right.
But like right here, like there would probably be some handicap right here along with that because there's no...
See, that kind of folds into what I was talking about, about with the ADA.
Right.
If the ADA come in here and did an inspection on us for compliance, I'm wondering, and I don't know the answer to this, but I'm wondering if the church identified handicap spots on their property would count for the town's overall count of handicap spots in an ADA evaluation? That, that's kind of in the back of my mind. It's just something for us to think about. If you talk to them, if you guys talk to those people some more, you might wanna raise that, raise that question.
I think ours would be, like, if you have like a two-block area, how many handicap, or, you know, like, how many blocks of sidewalk do you have, and then, or parking? And then it would tell us how many handicaps we would need for that.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just wondered if private property handicap spots would have an impact on us to be or not to be in compliance with federal law. I just don't know the answer to that.
Federal law is pretty stringent on that.
A lot of technical requirements on the spots themselves to ours, so... Anyway, I guess, no more questions from you, Tiffany.
I would just wanna make sure that we have attic with no parking around each corner so people can see. I said, I know that's not popular, but we've gotta keep safety in mind. None of us can make a motion. Oh, we don't write those. So, we need a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, 45-degree parking on Oklahoma, and redo our handicap on all four corners of that section and First Street.
Let's see, can, might wanna just, can we just, I don't know, can we just say to make parking places as presented by town administration?
Well, I think you need to make the 45-degree angle in there, because that way they have it in a center.
You're going in.
I think, I agree with you. I think you need that so that they have that reference in the center.
Yes, yes.
Make a motion to make Oklahoma 45-degree parking, and with our handicap parking on Oklahoma and Main Street, and First Street, and Main Street. on Oklahoma and Main Street and First Street and Main Street. Anything else I need to put on there?
Second Street.
Second Street.
What about Kansas?
First. Or Kansas.
We'd probably need Kansas.
Kansas, you have no parking and then you have parallel parking because of the big trucks that go into the co-op. And then everything else on there is private property parking. So I don't know that Kansas would be that.
Okay. I second that.
So you have, we have Oklahoma in Maine, First in Maine, Second in Maine?
Yes.
Okay. Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion with possible action to approve resolution number 2024-04, authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund. Tiffany?
So we talked about the re-grant, the total for the, the completion of the AMI water, water meter system is around a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So what I did is looking at the matching, to get the most points, I put it at fifty percent. So we would be asking for the ninety-six, eight-seventy. The rest, our match will come from our ARPA funds that we still have. So then that would allocate. I think I've got to look to make sure and see exactly, we'll have still a little bit of ARPA funds left over that we'll need to allocate to some project before the end of the year. But it, it will help us allocate the rest of those ARPA funds.
Oh, and maybe you said this and I didn't hear you, Tiffany. If we allocate that out of ARPA, how much will that leave us in the ARPA?
That's, I bet it, because we just finished up the water line project, so I've got to see because it didn't use everything that we allocated.
You probably said that, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
I got the motion here. You guys good?
I'm good.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2024-04, authorizing the application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund.
I second.
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes. Discussion with possible action to approve resolution number 2024-05, amending the 2016 Capital Improvement Plan.
So what this does is we get extra points if our project is on our capital improvement plan. I really thought it was on there, but I couldn't find it. So therefore, this will amend it and add it on there so we can get those extra points for the agreeing application.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2024-05, amending the 2016 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Just a little bit on that, since that was done in 2016, in a couple of years, we will be redoing the capital improvement plan.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes. New business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Stop. Okay, I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
I did.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes. Welcome to the Town of Hennessy Special Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, special meeting. Call to order, roll call. Here.
Dave?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Brady?
Other scheduled business, approve resolution number 2024-04, authorize application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund.
I want a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2024-04, authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund.
Second.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes. Approve resolution number 2024-05, amending the 2016 Capital Improvement Plan.
I move to approve resolution 2024-05, amending the 2016 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Everybody's on there.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, Harold, you got the second?
Dave.
All right. Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
You got the second?
Dave.
All right. Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Everybody's on there.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, Harold, you got the second?
Dave.
All right. Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Harold? You got the second?
Dave.
All right. Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.